I'd like to add the grant committee. Like that. Yeah, well, you can right now. You're going to be off first.
I'm going to be on first.
Yeah, and you're going to be off first. We usually get the, uh, the, uh, visitors up first, so they don't have to stay here for two hours. So, any additions or releases to the agenda?
I'd like to add the grant committee.
Like that. And they could each, uh, each do. Anything else? If not, have a motion to approve. So, who's second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any ayes, none? So, as I said, we put the delegations up front.
Thank you.
And that way you don't have to sit here for an hour or two months to get to you. You live the floor.
Yeah, it doesn't matter anymore as of hopefully tomorrow, I'll be your, one of your taxpayers, so. I'm sure you'll see me. Just like this instance, um, so I think, uh, I know most people, but just to introduce myself, I am Charlotte Saban. So, um, I do wear many hats, but tonight I am coming, uh, more to inform you of something that I am now involved with the past couple of years. Uh, so, as well as doing some other things, um, my oldest, Leila, started school a couple of years ago, she's in grade two, and my second, Luca, just started in grade primary. So, um, since I like to be involved in things, or I want to be an informed parent, and be engaged in my kids, and know what's going on, and, you know, was told I should, you know, keep up on things and know what's going on. So, my first home and school meeting, I became president. And then, um, this, I don't even know really how it happened, but we went virtual. I just was on the Student Advisory Council, and somehow I became president around January of that as well. So, um, tomorrow, we have a meeting, but I, I have a sneaky suspicion I will probably be president of still both of those organizations tomorrow, for another year. So, um, the main one, though, is the Student Advisory Council. So, um, the first year, so just kind of also my experience, um, we, we kind of, with the SAC, it's more about kind of the, the building itself and the education, or how we can help with the SAC. And this really isn't to blame a specific group, or I'm not here to say the teachers aren't doing a good job, or the education. This is more of how everybody really has to, um, develop our kids, because our kids are our future, right? So, um, how can we all help our kids? And, right now, um, we are, we're not doing enough. So, eh, when I first started with SAC, um, our principal gave us some stats on the kids, and I was just floored. So, when it comes to literacy, we're lucky if we're at sixty percent for the whole province. They do provincial exams, and I am still kind of new to some of the stuff, but they do provincial exams in grade three and grade six. Our mathematics was at forty-eight percent. So then, I got very scared, because now we've been in COVID for two years. So, what is happening to our kids? And Tri-County in general, our stats aren't great, but for me, I'm more concerned with Digby itself, and I know what our stats are, and I have to start somewhere, and I'm also obviously doing it for selfish reasons for my own kids, but I don't work that way, and I need to do it for all of our kids, because good, what we're doing is not good enough, because it's showing in the stats. And that's, you know, um, that's clear. Those, you can't skew those, so what's happening? So, um, we have a data wall as well, which was created. And so what happened there was I asked for our data for, for the last year, which we've had no provincial, um, standardization of testing this last year, we just get the kids back in class. So when the data wall came out at the end of the year, trying to formulate the information for me in an email, which is a bit tough, they were saying that how they got these numbers was our kids in lower grades were not meeting expectations, and then we had about seventy-five percent in grade five and six. So something is really wrong, because there's no way, if we do what it was two years ago, three years ago, to then be meeting seventy-five percent. It's just, it's not happening. So, we then, at forty-six percent mathematics, say even sixty, even sixty-seven percent three years ago, we have pushed those kids through for two or three years. Everybody, everybody passed, it's a pandemic. It's nobody's fault, we kept them alive, so we're going to push them through. These kids haven't met the basics that they need to learn. And they're going to keep pushing, be pushed through the system. So at grade twelve, there is no way, no way, they are going to be meeting the expectations. There's no way. So when Leila was in grade primary, we had an orientation, and we have a full-time staff member to try to keep kids in school. And at that time, she had a hundred kids on her caseload between our elementary school and our high school, to try to keep kids in school. So we have either chronic kids that show up a few minutes late, and I might add, I was early for this meeting. And, um, we have kids that don't show up, because they do, um, these early dismissals, um, or kids just don't show up. So there's a full-time staff members trying to support parents and these kids to get them just to go to school. And that teacher said to all of us, and that was my little moment there, of, by grade three, of just missing school, it's game over for those kids, if they miss X amount of time. Because it's so hard for them to catch up. Not to say it's not impossible, but what you need to put in for resources, support, time, for them to have the foundations to be successful in their education, is pretty tough. And then you add COVID, you add just the general stats that we have, it's an absolute crisis, in my opinion, of what is happening. There's lots of reasons why. There's the parents, economics, um, you know, the staffing, to the school board, to the education system, to funding, there's a multitude of reasons. But for me, I cannot, it's just not in me. It's not in me to sit back and know this can be my kid, but then it's over fifty percent of those kids in that school are not meeting expectations. And this is what our future is. It's just, i- it can't happen. So, when we had COVID happen last year, um, our principal said there was over ten kids in our elementary school at the beginning of the year that didn't register for homeschooling, or were coming to school. And because of COVID, we really didn't put any kind of onus, because it's a pandemic, so whatever the parent thinks is right, but where were those kids? Were they in the right environments to be home all day? We bought last year home and school funds, we bought socks for kids, we bought water bottles for kids, um, we buy clothes, or the school has funds, we feed the kids, we love the kids. Um, and I feel that we have to now, we don't have a choice, because it's just not fair, and it's not the kids' fault. So how do we, then, we have people that say to me, well, obviously, are probably a little bit crazy, and they're like, "That's a great idea, it's really big, um, sounds good, but it's, it's too big, you can't do it." So of course, I don't accept that. Um, I don't accept to wait anymore, because this is, um, too much of an urgency, in my opinion. My kid is in grade two, um, she's in French immersion. In grade primary, you do A, B, C levels. In grade one, it's D, E, F. When my kid finished school, which I had to, really hard to get, she was an E level. Did I do as much as I should this summer? Probably not. She probably, if they actually assessed her right now, she'd probably be at a D level reading. So that means my kid, at the top of, you know, being successful in the way that we say for society, world, working parents, we're white, um, we're still married, we feed our kids, we, you know, we try to be good parents. My kid has to go through D, E, F, G, H, I this year. So how many kids are starting off at probably a B or a C level, and not even at the basic of a grade one going into grade two? And that's going to be a lot. So that's a lot on a teacher, it's a lot on the system, it's a lot on the parents. And someone just says, "Well, you know, it's what our, you know, it's the way our socioeconomic status is for our community, you know? There's nothing we can do, we can't compare ourselves to a richer community." I don't take that as a reason, most of us are from here, um, we can be successful, and, you know, life isn't always easy, but that does not mean that our kids can't learn. I don't take that, um, as an excuse for our kids, and it shouldn't be an excuse. Um, we need to think about, even starting, so prior to school, we need to think about our kids right from their womb. Because right now, we have kids starting school that don't have the basic foundations of literacy. Their speech, words, how to talk, they don't have that. So, my thought is that, and I've talked to a bunch of stakeholders already, I haven't talked to everybody, I've done the same rant. Um, and what's even scarier is that you hear a lot of parents that fight this battle alone, and you hear them talking about how they're fighting with the system, they're trying to get resources, they pay thousands of dollars out of pocket to get their kid assessed, so that they can have the supports they need. They're fighting because we don't have enough. It's just like healthcare, we can't offer service if we can't access it. And that's basically where we're at with our kids. Um, so how do we, how do we try to change that? It's not going to change overnight. But what I'd like to see, um, which I've talked to, um, Dalla, we have Morgan here from Turning of the Tide, um, our principal here, Michelle is here with us, we have our SAC, um, from the high school, Prince, uh, president is here with us. Um, I've talked to Dark, uh, Family Resource, I've talked to the Schools Plus in Annapolis, I just talked to our literacy kind of head person for the Tri-County area. Still some more to come, and I've talked to some parents. And I would like to see a literacy committee be formed. And I want it to be very precise in what we do. No one has said, "That's a silly idea." And everybody has something to contribute. So that if they go to the Family Resource and they want to, um, do prenatal classes, we literally sit there and we read Twinkle Twinkle to the womb. Because giving somebody a book does not mean the book is going to be read. Because unfortunately, there's probably a, a percentage, which we know, it's just what it is, that those parents don't know how to read well themselves. So they're not going to read to their kids. So we need to read to these kids for them. So that when they come to school, they're ready. Then when they get to school, um, obviously, it's a bigger issue than, you know, what is for our town council, municipality council, but we have to obviously go to the province and say we need more resources. Um, because what we have is not enough, it's not good enough. Before COVID, we were not doing good enough. Because what we are doing, in the stats clearly shows that we need to be doing more. So with COVID, we do, we are allowed to have volunteers in the building again, hopefully that lasts. Um, so talking with a few people, what would be great to see, as well as that having volunteers come in, they were reading to the kids at recess, but actually having people from the community come in to help support the teachers, so that they could maybe spend time with kids that need that extra time, and then a volunteer can still be reading to the kids just because. If we look at Dark, they do wonderful summer programs, even talking to Sharon, they were trying to figure out even how they could do something before the, the skating, um, which is free anyway, but do like a reading for ten minutes. But you have the summer programs on the downtime, just get them, you know, on that downtime, if somebody reads them, have words up, talk about them. Um, and just again, force the kids to look at words, because they're not going to get it at home. So how do you guys fit into this? So of course, you know, money is always great, but, you know, that's, um, not always the easy thing. What I would like to see, um, and I guess my ask is that when, I will be going to the province, and I've gone to Jill, our new MLA, and I will be going to Tri-County, and I will be asking, and I know that, um, it may fall on deaf ears, but I'm going to push for this. So, support from our, um, elected officials to help with this fight, because these are our kids, they're my kids, they're everybody's kids, and this is what's going to be our future. And, you know, again, if we look at it from people coming into our community, if they were to look up the stats, and this was a new family coming in, you know, would they pick this area, knowing this is what the education system is? And not to say that they're not doing great things over there. But obviously, more supports need to be put in there. And the other thing is, where we're having the volunteers and things like that come in, it would be great to have, um, you, come volunteer your time and come read to our kids, or support the programs that we're doing, so that, um, again, we have a bit of a ample resource, so that our kids, you know, can be successful. It's going to be a good five years or more, obviously, to see it. Uh, but I'm prepared to, you know, be in the long haul for the next twenty years. But I really want you to be aware of the crisis that's going on up at the Hill. And this is no different even at the high school, um, you know, to get the Chromebooks that we need. Uh, prior to COVID, that was on my list of things to purchase, because there's technology outcomes, and our kids can't meet the technology outcomes, because we don't have technology in our schools. The technology is outdated at the high school, um, the SAC committee is looking at that. So for our kids to even be successful, we don't even have the resources, um, for our kids to be successful.
I've just, I've got a few questions here.
Sure.
The data wall that you mentioned, is that something, is that just internal, or is that something public in access, it's internal? Because we, we go to Stats Canada to see what their numbers are.
Yeah. Yeah, and the data wall came out, um, I'm pretty sure, because of the literacy rates within the Tri-County. This is something, so again, the, the teachers, um, basically put their kids up there, they're numbered. So again, you know, uh, for confidentiality, you know what the resources are, and it gives you that picture of where our kids are supposed to be, and where they are.
Do you, do you see the preschool program that was put in place, I guess, about a year ago, for the?
The pre-primary.
Pre-primary, do you see that as being a bonus, or?
Um, the pre-primary, so that my understanding, the way it is, it's more, um, a free-spirited program, so they're actually, um, their, uh, method is more let the kids play. Um, they're really not doing any of that kind of part of it, but not to say that literacy can't be part of it, that they don't have that, but their structure is very, um, informal, even at the pre-primary. Now, the preschools would be a bit more structured, I think, in some of the things, so going to, again, I talked to Chuck, so with Dalla, they have, and again, there are great things happening. So, um, the Family Resource does some literacy, gets kids to practice writing their name and reading. Uh, Dalla does a great literacy program, so of course, I'm not here to create anything, but again, we still need so much more to get our numbers where they need to be. So I want to, again, try to fill these gaps, and I think by starting here, these are tangible goals that we're not looking, you know, we're not coming here, we need, you know, ten thousand dollars to get this project going. I think these are things that we can work within the existing resources that we have, and just promoting. And another thing, I would like to see whether, funding or whatever, but in the community is like, you know, superstore probably COVID, they had to get rid of the oranges. But again, having books, and just having the kid look through a book while they're in the shopping cart. Um, again, because of COVID, but if they're all in COVID Ziploc baggies, that we, um, have them at the dentist, the doctors, that sort of stuff, so the kids take the book, who really cares? But again, while they're there waiting at all these different places, the banks, whatever, there's just books everywhere. And have that as our campaign, campaign, so again, that can be something within our, our own kind of municipality and town, that we can promote it within, within our own businesses and stuff like that. Just having books and words and literacy everywhere for our kids, and knowing that they can take them and get excited about books, and be, you know, want to have that.
I have a library board meeting Thursday afternoon, so I can get this additive in.
Yeah.
Our roles, elected officials, we can reach out to the Minister of Education.
Yeah.
We need to have a conversation.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? If, yeah, it's, my, my oldest daughter in high school, she has, she struggled with math, they changed the math program three times while she was in high school. And the teacher said, "That's why they never got it, because they kept changing the program."
Well, even right now, the kids, um, they, the way that, which, just kind of hearing through, but yeah, um, they were trying to get their school courses, the high school students, and the way they configured it, half the kids are only taking two, and then you need three to even play sports, and the kids can't even do them in class because of what they've done. So even my nephew, who wants to be an engineer, can't get his science courses that he needs, you know, and he's focused, you know, and again, you take someone who wants this, wants to get an education, and then we don't even provide the proper courses that they need. Um, and I just, uh, yeah, I just can't, I can't sit back, I don't want to fight just for my kid. I, it just doesn't sit well with me.
It's been an issue for a long time here.
Yeah.
Probably one of the root causes is poverty too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, you know, if we just almost take that out of the equation, and we give every kid the same playing field, and it's everywhere, because every kid needs it more. Um, you know, if I take myself again, like this summer, you know, if Leila was at day camp, put her in swimming lessons and had soccer practice, that was a, you know, a bundle of joy at the end of the day. So there's no way you're going to sit for thirty minutes and read, because, you know, the demon has been possessed, so, um, you know, again, if it's within the, already the organized program, then you know, and you can feel good as a parent, like, you know, my kid's still got her reading. And that goes for any kid, that they're going to regress. So, I, I'm selfish in my own kids, but I, I do, I fear for, for those other kids. And, um, and they deserve just as much of a chance as anybody else. And I don't care that we're from here, um, we can, we can do it, yeah.
We, we certainly have a deeper conversation around this table. Obviously, anybody wants to volunteer, can, can, can.
Yeah. Sure, yeah.
And we can reach out to the Minister. It would be elected official, elected official, then he would hand it off to the deputy minister.
Sure.
But that's, that would be our route, to say, "What, what can we do here?"
Yeah. Yeah. Because, yeah, what they're giving for money, it's just, it's not acceptable. And, um, you know, great things are happening in that school, um, and, uh, they're doing everything they can, but, um, whatever I can do to support the teachers and the kids and the support staff, I just want to do everything I can, yeah.
Any other comments?
I've found that it's not only a, sort of a coalition of all these problems that come together, but it's also what you do to apply this motion. And by that, I mean, if you get the technology, the technology has to be applied, the campaign has to be built, the education has to be seen, not only in the parents, but in the grandparents, in the larger family, right? So if there's something that we could do as a town council that would help that campaign.
Yeah.
Whether it be creating our own podcast, and reading those things, and putting them on the accessible files, right?
Yeah.
If we could do that, if we could, I mean, I'll just throw this out there, maybe we could, because it's going to be dark, five o'clock soon. If skating could have a bonfire up back, and the kids could listen to a, a story before they go skating.
Yeah.
I mean, there's lots of things we could do, but it's, it's concentrating that effort where it'll do the best.
That's right, that's right, yeah. I, I mean, no one has, everyone's time is precious, and I don't, yeah, I don't want to do something, and, and of course, like, we're not going to see it, but, um, again, like, just knowing that these kids are coming into the school and not having the basics, then they're, they're not getting it, unfortunately, obviously, at home, right? So if we can, again, penetrate all of those resources that they're likely, you know, using, and then, yes, like, um, yeah, Sharon was like, "Yeah, we'd love to do it before skating," they're like, "Who's going to do it?" Because, and, and then it's a human resource issue, right? So it has, yeah, we have so many human resources as well, everybody's stretched, and of course, volunteering, you know? We have incredible volunteers. So how do we then pull more people to do more things? Um, so that certainly is something as well. And, um, but then there are a few different funds that, you know, are available to kind of help. You know, after-school program would be great, but that's a bigger project that I have to really think about, because there's transportation, feeding, not that you can't do it, but again, if we can already work within the existing of getting in there and really succeeding, we don't have to really go further, because we're, we're meeting those expectations, and there's different literacy programs, um, that, you know, I was told about, and I think my daughter was even part of, and they go for twenty weeks. And by really, you know, hammering home and focusing in smaller groups, these literacy, they see huge success in them. But if people don't have, if we don't have the human resources to do that, and the teachers, the staff to focus on that, then it's a great program. But again, if we can support that, or have a volunteer in there, so a teacher can take those three kids and read to them, and focus, and we know from the data, and it's already researched, that this works, I mean, we can make a difference.
If you have consistency for four weeks, and then you skip.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
There was a question, I saw it, I answered it.
Just, um, the other night at the RCP meeting, it came up to, like, a topic of the kids at home. During the pandemic, uh, some parents weren't at work, so they were fighting, so the atmosphere at home wasn't that great, um, and abuse, of course, in the area, so if the RCP are in a relationship with the RCP.
Okay, yeah, I'll give them a call. Yeah, um, actually, yeah, I, I was going to cry, because they made it sound great, but they're like, "Oh yeah, stay home an extra week at Christmas." And it's like, man, do you know, like, the, the school has become everything, right? And people then literally dog on this system, like, "You need to fix this." And it's like, it's not for them to fix it, but they're, we're, you know, again, the breakfast program, the, like, they're doing everything, um, to try to give these kids, you know, the best possible, and, and so many kids look forward to it, and then they keep them home an extra week, thinking that's the safe place, and it's like, man, where are you, like, thinking? Because it's not, you know, we had kids, I guess, we were, uh, we were so close to doing a turkey dinner, and there was literally kids crying eating a turkey dinner, because they never had a turkey dinner before.
It's definitely changed since I went to school, a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
On school days, we actually got the key from the gym teacher, we're in the gym, playing basketball. You know, to actually use the school, but nowadays, it's like, uh, you're locked up, right?
Yeah.
Community use of school, there's another thing that hasn't been for a long time, so we talked about it at Dark, and maybe it's time to regenerate that again.
Yeah.
And we sent others to Minister of Education, waiting to get a, uh, program upstarted again, and, uh, still in progress. Of course, that's, we have a new one now, in the last two years.
But we'll bring that up at the next Dark meeting, go out the community use of school agreement, and see what we can do there too.
Yeah. No, thank you so much for listening.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll certainly continue the conversation here, and then we'll get a letter off to the Minister, saying we like to meet.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually, like I said, they'll pass it off.
They sure do, but, uh.
We'll, we'll have that conversation.
Yeah. Well, you know.
The people don't realize in the town that, what do we pay them, three hundred?
Yeah, three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
I knew we paid, yeah, and we pay for our police and stuff like that. Yeah, no, I'm more than happy, and everyone tells me what a big mouth I have, so I mean, I'm more than, I'm more than happy to use it, Ben, um, you know? Uh, I'm more than happy to, uh, to use it, so I really appreciate you guys' support, and I will be more than happy to update you, or just even email or come back, and let you know what we're doing for our kids.
Yeah, as, as you develop things, come here, maybe there's something we can get.
Absolutely.
I know it's frustrating, I don't, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
She's sugarcoated.
Yes, you know, we know, we, we, most of us here, well, I had, I've had kids go through this.
Exactly, yeah.
Because the program changes, um, there's all kinds of war stories.
Yeah, to, to hear a parent individually trying to fight and can't get anywhere, it's just, it's heartbreaking, so, yeah.
I find it strange that they can't read a clock.
Don't even get me started, Mike. Don't get me started, I literally have an analog, I made my own analog clock at home.
He can't even write his own name.
We tell the kids, "Be at work quarter to five." What's that?
Right, what's quarter to five?
Let that same kid go through school and graduate with a grade twelve.
Yes. Because we don't, we don't hold back our kids, and I asked them, I asked a parent that, and I said, "What would it, what would it mean, or what would that do, do you think, to your kid, if you held them back just a year to catch up?" And they're like, "It would, it would be a game changer." Like, you know, these kids go, the kids, yeah, the kids go into the next grade not knowing the first stuff, so of course, they're going to feel stupid, literally, because they, they don't know. And if they were struggling before, we've just, um, snowballed it.
And then they drop out?
Then they drop out, absolutely. So, um, yeah, it's, um, I, I just, I can't, uh, but I, I've made my own analog clock at home. My daughter, and we're practicing.
Yes, and when I was in grade five, going into grade six, it was a few of us that struggled in math. And they sent us from St. Pass down over the hill to the Red School, to Marjorie McCormick. And there was more than a few tears shed in that classroom.
I was scared to death.
At the end of that year, we moved back ahead of the grade sixes.
That's right.
And I, I have Marjorie McCormick to thank, to actually not be called back here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Absolutely, yeah, no, I look forward to it, thank you.
Would you like to include the high school in that invitation?
Oh, always, it's, yeah, always, yeah. Because we got even worse?
Yeah.
Oh, I, yeah, I look at that here, but all the time, what's going on?
This, this year, they changed the courses from five to four a day, and now, tech ed, music, and, so our family studies now gets more class time than science.
so our family studies now gets more class time than science.
Yes.
For my.
It's not funny.
Well, it's, you know. Because the kids are mad as hell, but the administration.
Yep. Okay, we'll move on, uh, minutes in the previous meeting, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Everybody's had a chance to go through those? Oh, they wouldn't love some, but they would love. Anybody noted any errors or revisions in those?
Make a motion to accept the minutes, August sixteenth.
Seconder?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Fear not, can we have a motion to approve? So moved. Seconder?
Second.
All those in favor of those minutes, say aye. Any ayes, none. So those six. This is arising from the minutes, what was the assessability advisory committee? Any comments on that lesson?
Um, well, I just, I dropped it, that little report, it kind of gave you the history of when council met and reviewed the original plan, um, presentation that was made, so the motion that was made at committee hall and then the recommendation that went forward to, uh, council was approved on, uh, April the sixth of two thousand twenty-one, but now we're asking, is that to rescind, Tom, or to amend?
Because action hadn't really been taken. Yes, we pointed to members, but we've heard, nobody has met. So basically, we would rescind the motion, and we need two-thirds majority in order to rescind the motion, and a new motion could be made. So basically, that takes the old motion off the box and puts a new motion off the box. I'll just bring that up here.
And that's just an amendment to, to change the structure of the committee to, uh, yeah, exactly, so that we can fulfill the committee requirements and move on with creating the plan, cause time is getting short, so.
Yes. Yeah, can we have a motion to rescind?
Motion to rescind.
That motion.
One second, that second.
Any discussion on it? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, none, so now you need.
Need one appointment.
One appointment to that committee. And who, who do we currently? Yeah.
Tom, my son.
Oh, Tom Peter, please. So we need one more?
No.
No. One less, one less, yeah, that's it, one less.
Got a quarter?
Yeah, who's?
Yeah, it's fun, cause last time we moved and, you know, seconded those to do it, so.
That's right.
Good.
Yeah, now what?
Have a problem staying in, no, have.
Probably he.
All right, you got it, Mike.
Okay.
Oh, does it have to be dark still? Sorry, Pete. It's darker, perfect. Dark was perfect, right?
Yeah, I think, I think the plan was to have one murder dark.
Yeah, I think it was at the time, one dark murder.
I didn't know, but I don't know what's, uh.
Uh, what I'm looking at here is the municipality of Digny, of Digny Councilor, uh, community member, community member in town, Digny Councilor. So someone from municipality, someone from the town.
Yeah, I mean, also the building design, along with the town of the building, but they're not gonna be able to. Two from municipality. Right. So do you know? The city's not gonna be representing either.
Right, do you know who the municipality representative is?
Uh, David Teager.
I believe it's David Teager, yes.
So he's not dark, so.
He's not dark?
He's not.
No, he's not on there.
No.
Well, Peter's on there.
Peter's on dark, so I'm just wondering, like, do we want somebody on dark or not on dark? Right? Do you want someone on dark or not on dark?
I, I, Sharon will be part of the committee as well, so.
Okay, well, there you go.
Yeah. She just won't be a voting member.
That's right.
She won't be. No, it's, I, it's fine, yeah, because you probably are gonna have conversations around your table, Peter can throw it, plus our conversations, so. Okay, we, so we need a new motion to, uh, to appoint, I guess we'll make that a motion to appoint Council Terrible to assessability committee.
Make the motion to appoint Council Terrible to assessability committee. Those seconded, that seconded.
Any further discussion?
Uh, let me just add in that, uh, by doing this, we approve the, the proposed change to the committee structure, to two council members, one from the town and one from the municipality. And therefore, I'm going to need two community members.
That's how we handle that one too.
Yeah, so I add that in, that might wind it all up.
Yeah.
Do you approve of that change?
Yes. Get it.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any ayes, none. Request for proposal, former V I C, that was something that we asked, uh, council just to flip through. Note anything? Uh, yeah, the only thing I thought of was, if we had, uh, maybe a one or two line admission statement, is, of course, I don't know what we wanna see there, but something that would see maximum benefit to the community and the council, or to town and the community as a whole, or something like that. Other than that, it's, you got it all covered, so. Anybody else had any comments on it?
Anything that I, you know, want is that the actual date is October twenty-eighth. Been a couple of dates in that time, but, uh, it is October twenty-eighth, which is a Thursday, so. So there's interest. Yeah, actually, I've got an appointment with two, two people to view the facility tomorrow, not today. And they've both been notified, or, well, one has been notified about this process, and the other one will be tomorrow, when I meet with them, so.
Any other comments? So we, this is fine, send it this way to the public? Okay. Uh, that adds another, uh, I guess that last line, it proposed, may not necessarily be accepted, but what, what reasons why we, uh?
Yeah, that goes back to what, what our mission is at that point.
Yeah. So it, so it may, in the meantime, we think of some criterias why we may or may not accept that proposal. Although they committed one ready for a dollar a year, that's just unreasonable, so.
Remember what we had in there.
Oh, basically, yeah. You'd say if Dean Dodd in the best interest of the county. Yeah, that, that, basically, that's what it's, it's state saving, so basically, obviously, Durant for a dollar a year. It's not, it's not my best interest. And, you know, uh, different, uh, different types of activities may not be in the best interest of the community. They may have a good proposal, and they may wanna give us lots of money, but we may not agree with what the, what the use, the use of the building. I think it was, we set that up. Okay, do you want, do you wanna approve of this on what's on, or is one?
Well, I sort of wanted to make sure that it was up all right, and if it is all right, then it, uh, in terms of council or, um, set advertisements into that, then I can finish it up, take the draft off it, and I can give copies, so it to both of the people and me.
Well, just the only concern was there was enough separation between the actual V I C and the property beside it, or the combination of the two, whatever the proposal might be, as long as I say no, that it's gonna be taken whatever way it's presented.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I guess that was the other thing, you know, at this, this point, council doesn't, hasn't, uh, decided, or, or more or less looking at the facility, not, not those, not the land, right? Unless somebody puts that into the proposal.
Definitely, yeah.
But if, if not, we're looking at the rental of the, the things, the, basically, what was used as the V I C with the parking outside, all the excess lands could be used for something different, so.
Yeah, we could.
And we decide, the council decides to, uh, subdivide it later on, and, uh, you know, and put it on the market or whatever, so. So I, I don't think that keyhole was into.
No.
No, cause you described.
Uh, building and the parking.
Yeah, so, yeah, so ba- basically, that's, that was done purposely, just so that it was what would be included, not the excess land.
Any other comments? If not, then we'll move on, C A O report.
Okay. So we had, uh, in the planning department, we had one rezoning application, when it was received, and one application, or one subdivision approval was issued, generated thirteen hundred fifty dollars in fees in the month of August. So the rezoning application for the property located on Second Avenue is being processed. A planning advisory committee is being scheduled for the last week of October. I just add something, uh, that planning, or that one or any of our planning advisory meetings, the, uh, the developer, the pines, and they would be more happy to come and discuss their plans when it's, you know, when it's appropriate, so. They would come to the planning advisory, so just keep that back here.
Yes.
Well, basically, we are, uh, I think you're, in the next, pull it up, talk to that.
Yeah, I see, you got your little paragraph there.
The first line of advisory meetings.
So anyway, so, um, we're looking at the last week of, of October, is there any day on, because all council is on the P A C plus two citizen members, so, um, we got a trial line after plane are at the same time.
Not Friday.
No, it won't be Friday.
Good. Anytime.
We were thinking Wednesday, weren't we?
You say the last week?
Yeah, the twenty-sixth.
Maybe twenty-seventh of October.
Yeah, twenty-sixth of Campbell Ospreys, twenty-seventh.
No.
They should let it go.
Any of this looks okay for you?
Yep.
It was a dark meeting, but twenty.
Uh, directly before.
Twenty-second.
Yes.
No, twenty-eighth. Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, I'm good. Tuesday, I'm not available. Uh, should be back at eight, let's see. Twenty-seventh.
So we'll try the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Try it, we'll sue.
That is up. Well, crescent, give him first to the. At the night meeting or afternoon, you know? That'll be even easier. Uh, the subdivision was, uh, Burke's Landing, which is a consolidation now on Burke Avenue, so that's, uh, used to be, uh, D B four, old D B four game.
Ah, yeah.
And that, that property was three or four small little lots, so he consolidated them all into one. It should have been done a long time ago.
That's how it developed.
Um, so, yeah, the other one was Chris Millie and I, and they had further discussions with the Embers of the Podge Resort concerning the proposal development, and they've been, form, an formal application would be required before an official response from the town would be received. So basically, um, what they've been doing at this point is keeping the car very close to the chest, but what they are doing is, is throwing ideas out and see if they'll stick to the wall. And, uh, and we are reluctant to respond to that because we don't know, you know, are they serious, or are they just stones intended? So basically, uh, especially if they're looking for rezoning, you need an actual application. What they would like to rezone, and that's where we can start to, to look at it, and I mean, you know.
Is, would this conversation been since I was there?
This conversation was a week ago.
Yeah, I, it's been three weeks since I had that, yeah.
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 It's been, and, uh.
But just so I, in case they do all of me again, cause they're doing their, their law.
Yeah. Yeah, I was aware, we, we were, Chris and I were aware, aware of that, and actually, they mentioned it, so.
Yeah.
So, anyway, it's, uh, you know, what they have on paper thus far, which isn't a lot, but it's an aggressive project, it would be a good project, and we have to be very careful and ensure that it's a real project that's gonna be beneficial to, not detrimental to, to, to the town.
Well, he said to me, what would a hundred and twenty-five million dollar project do to the town? I said, we have an operating budget of five million, what do you think it's gonna do?
Yeah. Anyway, that was all good. Uh, building department, uh, so three building permits issued, generating two hundred and eighty-two dollars in permit fees in August. So we had a garage on, at one twenty, Penitium Street, renovations at seventy-seven Second Avenue, and a commercial office at one twenty-one Burke Avenue. Fire department, getting a report. Office of the C A O, uh, N S E M O alert ready, emergency alert. Uh, so I took part in a Microsoft Teams session, training session on the alert ready, emergency alert system. Municipalities are, can have the capability to request an alert on the alert ready system to be sent out into respective municipality. So they, basically, uh, uh, the only one that really come to my mind that, uh, because it has to be some, something, uh, emergency, uh, threat to public safety, that type of thing, one of the, one of the things probably would be, if heaven forbid, we end up on the water, of boil water or, right? It's a good way to get the information out there quickly, you know, because, I mean, ba- basically, we want, want that information out there, right? Uh, so there's gonna be more, more guidelines and stuff coming, coming down, but, uh, you know, I don't know whether we'd be using it very frequently or not, but it's nice to be able to, to keep developing and be able to put it out. There are two types, one is a non-broadcast alert, and one is the broadcast alert. Broadcast alert, is there, on your text to every cell phone, and, uh, and on radio, T V broadcast, it just interrupts, it interrupts everything. And, uh, the non-broadcast is basically, they do a press release and issue the press release, so.
There are some third-party companies that'll do that now. We have an emergency in the town, if you have a contract with a third party, then they'll get the information. I see those emails crossing.
So what, what exactly, like, Edith, if there was a catastrophic failure in chlorination system, what's the process? You, you call Tom?
Only Leslie.
Okay.
And, well, maybe, I go to Leslie first normally, then Tom, but we got a process, it's all set in place, that we have, what?
That is good.
Three hundred and fifty, the ethical.
Yeah, we have, uh, just a word for it, boil order, uh, protocol, or.
Yeah, boil, boil dry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have, uh, we have numerous, I say, binders for every different scenario. We have a problem, that's the binder we go to, we go follow.
Which includes, you know, lists that have to be updated of everybody's phone numbers, especially businesses and, and stuff. Uh, you know, they're our first pri- priority, and make sure that the restaurants and hotels and fish plants and anybody that uses our water will knows immediately that it's not safe, uh, an issue. And, uh, but this alert system will also complement that, because we don't have to worry about, uh, product. Because the other, other thing is broadcasting. because the other, other thing is broadcasting on the radio and, you know, what station do you broadcast it on?
Yeah.
Right.
Thinking after show, did their water thing on or did they not?
Yeah, they did. Well, it stood no social emergency alert.
Yeah.
Because I got the text messages too. Like normally Tom and Leslie would look after communication with the public. And then I would look after the communication with local social environment, fisheries, stuff like that. Yeah. Because it's all on my license, but it's under.
It's good because a lot of, uh, like for my case, for example, mom living alone, at least I found out, right? If, if it just went out in the town as a notice, God knows what I would have found out and she would have been drinking bad water, right? So, so it is, it is a good system for people in that.
A, A N S file conference, so association of N S Port Business owners, Rosha, uh, file conference is gonna be held October fifth to eighth in Dartmouth. This will be an in-person conference. Our applicable COVID nineteen regulations being applied. Uh, Matthew and I are planning to get that. Town land inventory list. I completed the land inventory list and I placed it on a cloud for the convenience of the council members. So hopefully, you can download it, so I'll be there. Keep at it.
You know, see, you, at least you put the value of the, the properties, which was nice to.
Yeah, and what I tried to do is, uh, yeah, put, put the assessed value here, and, uh, in the square footage, you know, right, or, yeah, area. So the, you have roughly how big, and also what use they currently have, so.
If you, if you look for that on the cloud and you don't see it, can you just let me know so then we know that I can call?
I looked at it, didn't I?
You did see it?
I see.
Uh, sound people, land inventory PDF.
Yeah.
I just sorted my file name and.
Yep. Signage, nothing's fancy, so the signage has been ordered for placement on Water Street, but I mean, we're like parking in front of nothing's fancies. So, um, we've got.
So wait for the sign blanks to come in.
Yeah.
We did the, the proof is done. Tom's seen it. He's approved it, so.
So as soon as they get down, you know, and basically we're gonna start from the no parking. Blank space there by Dean's parking.
Yep.
Little space there that's hatched out.
Yeah.
So we'll go back there. Three spaces, I think.
I think, like I said, three. They'd be really close to the crosswalk, but that's okay for just unloading, leaving, so. Sorry, thanks. I mean, we ordered four signs just in case we need a fourth one, so, yeah.
Yeah, first one might get torn out.
Yeah, yeah.
Frank McIntosh Memorial Park, so the town is in possession of the sign and the fountain, fountain. Uh, it has been a delay in installation of the electrical for the fountain due to the fact that we are in mid-September. I wonder, both the thoughts of council on having the sign installed now and in mid-April, early May, have the fountain installed and have dedicated a ceremony at that time. Yeah, because you put it in there, I'm gonna take it in a month, month for ice is over, so.
Hopefully it's longer than that.
Okay, basically, uh, the person that was manufacturing our, the box to develop electrical components in is, uh, yeah, seriously sick. And so that's what the delay is, so we're trying, trying to get.
I saw somebody else, but it's gonna be at least three, four weeks.
Yeah, so we're, we're always gonna get to it. It's gonna be too late to even try to give any, and, uh, uh, so I was good with getting the sign put up at least. Yeah, let's just see what the reaction is.
And my thought, I, my thought, I would be both contact the family and maybe ask them, I don't know.
I mean, I want to talk to them, maybe I have to talk to them.
I prefer the sign and the fact to go at the same time myself. Instead of just a sign, then, you know, like what, what's this? Like it's a Frank McIntosh, or what is it, Frank? At least when the town's going, we know.
Yes. See what this, uh.
Phone me.
Yeah, I'll check with the family.
Oh, yeah.
Family's good and.
The sign looks comfortable in your office right now.
I need one off it, but. Okay, I get it, because it's hard to another sign that needs to go out to.
Yeah, that one's going on regardless, so, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can do a little thing around that too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and the last thing is the splash park, so dental splash pad. And we located at the Von Dassel Memorial Playground. This location has many merits as it is close to the water and wastewater infrastructure, washing facilities, and can be accommodated within the fenced in area of the park, thus reducing costs. The Public Works Director is working closely with the director and the committee on the planning safety, so. Good. Any questions for the C A O? If none, then we'll move on to the public. Public Works Director.
Um, so of our ventures that we've ordered, the three green ones arrived, um, they've been installed. Um, the four, uh, what are they called? Classic ventures, I guess. They've arrived too. Every one of them is damaged. Um, two of them severely damaged, legs broken off, one leg bent, so just gonna hang on to them, not to put anything out until I know what the insurance plan is gonna be through the shipping company. So, um, two of them would probably save, but they'll have to be repatriated, know where to save them. The other two are just complete write-offs, so they're gonna have to buy us the ventures.
Yeah.
Um, so we've done lots of paving around, as everybody's, I'm sure, has seen. Uh, before I saw them, the Prince William Street, that was two seventeen. Uh, we've done Third Avenue and West Street from Saint Mary to Saint George. Um, the pavers were here again today and did a bunch more patching around town to secure some of our past lots. And we did hit the shore road, um, all the portals up there. We had a long mill, so it stays nice and flat and it's definitely better traveling up through there now. We had a spare crosswalk, one single sign, so we did purchase two of the flashes this year. And the second we put at the post office, we were able to take the one spare solar panel we had and put it on the middle post. So when you press the button, you get three flashes across there instead of two, because of such a long crosswalk. So I think it was one of the ones we did have a lot of complaints about was there that people wanted one there, so I think it was good by trying to put one, put three.
I did see some replies when I went up to the, uh, it's nice that the town, while they listen to.
Yeah, I saw. That's good, see?
I was sitting at the post office for about ten minutes. I saw four people go across and that.
No, no, no. And that's all.
Yeah.
Probably.
Need to set a police officer there for a day. Just a warning for J Y.
That's it, it's so long, isn't it?
If you don't heat traffic, you're.
You don't heat traffic, cross where you want. If you get hit, you're responsible.
But it's nice to see.
It is nice to see.
Yeah.
Um, so under wastewater, uh, just. Under wastewater, uh, just clear daily duties and clean U B number one and their biweekly water samples. Um, streets, um, gardens have all been with, uh, weeded, uh, water, water and fire with hanging baskets. The edge, peel every garden in town. I don't wanna hear it, just says the pond and tide view, but she did a wonderful job, assuming we had. And she's pretty well edged every garden and weeded every garden. You got us three followers. Um, picked up cigarette fights, uh, finished the ramp on everyone's walk. Uh, we had lobster dash. And of course she worked on the Second Avenue extension on the South End. And boys cleared their day, daily duties, weekly duties. Um, so on new equipment, um, two thousand eighteen backup lease is up in January of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, it's a great working machine and I'd recommend that we buy out this machine and not lease any, not lease one anymore. Um, we'll be working towards having two machines, five years apart in age. So we have a newer machine for the earthwork and the older machine for trash compaction. Um, in the event that we have a breakdown, we would have a spare machine to use. Uh, the spare machine is currently six and a half years old. And I'd recommend that we trade this, trade this for a new one in three and a half years as it'll be ten years old. Then we can work towards getting the taped our machines five years apart.
Lease one, is that a guarantee of recission water or?
Yeah.
So you'll bring that to us. So what's the cost of playing over?
Eight, nine thousand?
It's in the eighty some thousand. The last couple times we've looked at it, uh, generally, it's been a very good deal relative to the market value of what they're selling for, three-year-old John Deere's. So I haven't looked at this one specifically, but the last couple times we looked at it, uh, it's a favorable number.
You get that to us.
Yeah, and something to keep in mind too is very hard to buy equipment right now. So even leasing a new machine, it could be a severe challenge for us some come January, so. And we're on the same side of tires as in the bathroom machine. The rig will have to be changed before winter, and we have a spare site in the garage that came with the leasing machine. So if we do keep the machine, we got a new setup going right on in November, so. Just something to think about too. It's, it's a really good machine. Aaron's, it's, it's his baby and he's looked after both, so. Aside from a couple of broken windows, which happened, you know, it's, it's been a good machine for us, so. Okay?
Uh, we'll have to be amended to our capital budget, it'll take at least just three years, but, uh, get the information together and.
Uh, Second Avenue extension, it's ready for the final, uh, topping of the road. Easter fence is here tomorrow to go over the guardrails and install, and then we'll put the glass thing on in partnership and open the, at least open up the Saint George section of the road. We may not open up the Second Avenue section as of, for the winter, but in the spring we probably would, so. Hopefully that construction will start there sometime, so. Um, safety is nothing to report and personnel, we have one employee off monthly and, um, the students are all done for the summer.
Any questions, Rick?
Uh, just George Street, is there an issue of fully building A on the street?
So that would be, is salt shut, I believe? It's, it's within the street right, but yes. Um, it's not affecting anything we're doing, but it is in the street right, but so, which we have, how many buildings in our?
We already lost, yeah. I lived here first, and you know, I stepped out the side door when I was on town property.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Well, half the building, yes.
Just a quick question, where, that's been cleared down over holidays development, that big pile of trees and stuff?
Yes.
Is he responsible for that?
That will be his responsibility, because it's on his property, because he can't burn it.
Yeah, he can't burn it. I'm just wondering, is that gonna slow his development down? Uh, I don't know. I'm just asking that because.
He's the one that, he cleared it to put it in development.
Yeah.
I shouldn't slow it down.
All right.
It's pro, it's, it's material, it's material cost that slows it down, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, except for the, same old docks. And it's why I don't like it in the state this last year, yeah.
Yeah, just, just choice.
Yeah. Anything else for Rick?
Any concern over developments set up like concrete in the ditches? Maybe that one will trade close to Public Works?
Probably what the person should do is make a complaint with the law enforcement officer.
Okay, can we talk after?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, nothing else? We're, we're done with it? We'll move on to Director of Finance.
Okay.
We just heard a lot of views.
So the Scotia Harvest Plant relocation, the financial effect, uh, quite a, quite a significant financial effect, net benefit, should say that. This is great to have something that's, uh, been reported in the news, it's high as fourteen or fifteen million dollars. We'll see in the end what it turns out to be, but, uh, definitely affects the area. Uh, not only was wrecked in our financial statements, but worse than one and everything else. So the water budget, we'll have to look at, uh, because it is significant, the, the water, uh, revenue that we're going to lose, about sixty-three thousand dollars a year, uh, unless the water street location ones get picked up by someone else who operates some, you know.
We had a tour the other night, he had mentioned that they're selling, so.
So somebody may be going to operate.
Yeah.
Or maybe a park.
Or maybe a park.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it is some say.
Yeah.
And sewer charges, uh, about fifty-two hundred dollars a year will be lost. Um, so they're putting in their own wells, that's why the water, uh, we won't be recruiting much of the water revenue. And the sewer, we don't charge sewer municipally, the municipality does. And, uh, I assume if, if there's a major effect on the town's ability to process that, then some negotiation will have to be done uh, in the end, and that's probably something Tom and Jeff will be talking about. To see if that affects our, our sixty-five percent, thirty-five percent sharing of, of the sewer of the town. Because whatever is open in the municipality, they pay thirty-five percent of our forest mains and lift stations because they've got about thirty-five percent of the flow coming in. If they dramatically add to that, then we have to relook at that, uh, in terms of sharing. Uh, the tax revenue is gonna be the more significant, uh, impact. Um, this year, uh, we're looking at about thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, that's just the town share, now three point five million in assessment. And, uh, the downtown buildings, the three in total, only give us about eighteen thousand dollars in revenue. And we don't know what's gonna happen to them, but even if they go away, uh, in their parking lots, that's, we're still gonna be way ahead. At best guess, say it goes to fourteen million, that's four times this, uh, four, three, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's another, you know, a hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. Uh, we'll see where it actually ends up with the assessment. Sometimes they don't reach the C D C news report number, which can be inflated. But, uh, but it is going to be, uh, a big, uh, which is good. And as far as other significant items, uh, well, one of the major reports is the financial information return, and the province has never been this late before with getting it in, uh, or getting the template to us so that we can complete it, and, uh, they said that they will give extra time beyond the September thirtieth duty. And they haven't said how much, but, uh, very unusual.
They also said they wrote double equalization grant during the election. And I see a couple of these families are now saying, where is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, there was a rule of that.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's, that's the major points. Any questions?
Well, I think the financial was done tonight. Are we one of the, um, agents that are asking for that?
For what?
Governor. Now, the, the government just, it was, Jordan made a promise for the election campaign that they would be doing that. And, uh.
It's just equalizing, it will affect everybody.
Yeah, it's not just one town.
I think it was driven by the C B R M, uh, arguing that the province was not getting a fair share of money and that. But there's nothing official that I've seen unless anyone else has.
No, it was a, it was a promise. Special Constable, you don't, I guess no questions for Director?
Hey, Bruce.
Needers or, or in sightly premise report for the month of August into September. Ten Carlton Street, still no change. Uh, one forty First Avenue is administrator dangerous in our or insightly. I placed orders for remedy on the premise dated twenty-sixth of August, two thousand twenty-one. Two vehicles have been removed, only to be replaced by a boat owned by one of the tenants. Uh, and the Public Works Director had a brief conversation with the tenant concerning the situation and the remedy orders that had been approved, so posted. The tenant had explained that he had no place to work on his boat, only in the back area of the building property. Uh, I hadn't spoken, sorry?
Yeah, it got posted.
The apartment complex, I went for it. Oh, this. It did, but has a little signage on the back of it to me.
Laugh, it was one of the buildings that got posted and they came and stuck it on the front of town hall, so.
They told me the place to order someone's. Anyways.
No sign.
No. Had spoken with the landlord regarding the issue and he has informed me that he would be looking for a place for the tenant to store his boat. As for the area in and around the boat, the landlord assured me that he'd be cleaning up the property properly after the boat is removed. Fifty-eight Carlton Street, this office had received complaints concerning loose garbage in and around the garbage bin of the residence. I contacted the building manager and a cleanup had carried out the next day. Uh, the building manager also informed me that a big, bigger garbage collection container will be replacing the existing. Seventy-seven First Avenue, complaint had been received concerning the overabundance of garbage and the amount of loose leaves and branches left inside the compost bin. I had spoken with the building's managers concerning this issue, and they assured me that they would talk with their tenants to make sure that this does not happen again. There are two large dumpsters located at the apartment complex, which allows adequate garbage collection space enough for this building. One forty-nine West Street, it's an update. Grass had been cut by a contractor for the amount of sixty dollars paid for by the town upon assignment agreeance that the monies would be reclaimed by the town, Digby, either by sale of the property or taxes due.
So, that, that's been sold?
Yeah.
So, does it go to the new owner or the old owner, or have we reviewed that?
I'm leaning on the property, so lawyers should, should.
Oh, yeah, it's done, closed until October twenty-fifth, I think.
Yeah, so when the lawyer do the thing, the lawyer will tell them, this is what they're standing on.
Fourty-nine.
Sorry, forty-nine.
That's.
Forty-nine.
One forty-nine West Street.
Yeah, it's something to, to, he's got a house he sold down in Clare, and it closes late, late October, sorry.
Seventy-seven Monique Row, registered letter had been sent to Irving Oil Properties on the twenty-fifth of June, two thousand twenty-one. Reply by telephone slash email conversations with Irving Oil Real Estate and Properties Administrator. And, and I agree, compromise have been sent forward to have the D P salvage remove the garbage box and clean the area at a cost of a hundred dollars to be paid for by Irving Oil Real Estate and Environment. And box has been removed.
Was there any other conversation wrapped around the building itself?
They, she told me that.
I know they're never gonna sell the landfill because of the apartment.
No, but it, it is on their hit list, is what she told me, those are exact words. It's on their hit list to have it torn down.
Inside supplies.
Yeah.
The rooftop, the inside ceilings are damaged. Licking, licking bed, running, everything down. Well, they aware how bad the building is.
So, yes, yeah, I sent her pictures also.
Hopefully, that the hit list gets, get required.
Well, I'll be following up on this. Like a ladder number of that.
Bruce with fifty-six St. George Street. Had that tall grass, and they cut the grass, but, but the building itself is not secured anymore, there's nothing covering the doors and windows. If a kid goes in there, they're gonna be in trouble.
What, what street is that?
Fifty-six St. George Street.
Is that the one with the big?
The one that burned.
The one that burned.
Oh, okay, I didn't know about that, but I'll look into it.
Well, they, the last conversation was that they had somebody tearing it down.
Oh, it's been weeks.
Yeah.
I think he's not, he's just tearing it down.
It just got, does have to be secure.
Yeah.
It's vital.
Call, call Christian marriage.
Well, it's a bit of a time there.
Here too.
Here too. Sorry, I'm just jotting something down here.
Yeah.
In regards to. Technical Services monthly report for August and September. The close circuit T Vs, all the cameras are up and full of function. I wanted to add to that, too, because I, I haven't been able to get ahold of our camera guy. He's got a.
Zoom around.
Yeah. Parking, there was two warnings given out, two separate incidents, and no parking areas. Civic address, nothing to report for the month of September. Dog control, two incidents, loose dogs within the town, both were returned to owners. Crossing Guards, Mr. Kirkland Peck has joined the Crossing Guards as the new spare. Solid waste, there's nothing reported at this time, tax license, nothing to report. And there was no violations given for the months of August and September. And that's all I have.
Bruce, just on your solid waste, Leslie and I, for the next newsletter, are gonna do some, a little bit more education as per the mayor's solid waste, just what can be thrown away, and if you have anything you want in there, just let me know.
Hope I'll mean. Thank you.
Okay, no more questions for Bruce, and you guys can go home. No correspondence? New business, N S S N Virtual Conference, why did the administrators get to meet the public?
Oh, yeah.
We can be trusted.
Do you want to go back to that, as your, your president, well? She stepped down soon, she backed for, she didn't run the election, so. Yeah, anyway, that's coming up, November, what, seventh, eighth, ninth, something like that? Anyway, if anybody's interested, it's, lackluster, as we know, when you get registered, it's a lot, it's all virtual, so a lot of time to try.
Yeah, so just to, just to have caucus for, for us.
Well, there's a virtual conference, and then there's Town Caucus meeting, if anybody's interested, getting on the Town Caucus. I've been on there, yes.
We can nominate you if you like.
No, don't do that, don't do that again. It's, give me a lot of time, but just, Tom, do you have any, yeah, Tom, I haven't seen the, I think the emails coming, starting to come down, so. Just that, have the A M A, you've got a virtual conference, I wouldn't talk part, because I did take part in the Spring one. Day and rate in the, for the, you know, on. Don't get much, don't get much value for your money, right? And it's difficult to set, like, I come to work, you know, it's a dog, it's a session on, or you're trying to do that, get interrupted. And so, it's just not, you know, it's not, not the same. So, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna be registering for, for that, this one. Registration.
It's her. It's too bad they couldn't do, like, regional ones, like, they used to do regional ones.
Regional meetings, yeah, I don't know why, maybe that's something, I'll, I'll send an email, the end of the loop. I'm thinking she's still, I think, we were just talking about that. She ran, provisionally, but didn't get elected, so she had stepped down, and thinks she's found, so.
It'd be nice to even have our region together.
Yeah, we used to have regional meetings, Digby, Yarmouth Clare, Aridale.
It'd be nice to request one, anyway. Three hundred and fifty hours.
Yeah. We, yeah, so, just a little off there, probably out on the housing, Yarmouth is, would like to meet, so we should see some others join us here, so. And then we're gonna have a meeting. Okay, so if anybody's interested, get, they are two, sit in front of Zoom meetings all right, let Leslie know. Didn't you notice your drawing, Will?
That's fine, I will, I'm sitting in the drawing room.
Okay. Grant Committee.
I just, I was thinking last few months, and I just wondered if it'd be possible, or if people thought of forming a grant committee. You know, staff is working hard, and sometimes you don't have enough time to, to look at grants and see what's up there. I just got an email, and we probably all did from the Board of Trade last week, there's five hundred million dollars up for grabs, and, you know, maybe if we could start a committee, and, you know, once we figure out what we, our goals are, whatever, bring it to council or to Tom, and see what priorities that they want us to work on. It wouldn't be us tracking as much as, you know, what traction they would like us to go to type thing.
Five hundred million, and they've already, but they're giving out no more than fifty thousand dollars a committee.
Yeah.
For a grant, yeah, which, they sent for streetscapes, and I said, wow, let's jump on that, and it's, well, we're already looking at it. But maybe looking.
Yeah, looking for grants and projects and stuff that we, you know, we can dig into, and we all, we all have our own contacts, right?
What caught my attention, I listened to Annapolis, town of Annapolis, this community, the whole, just happened to be there. And they had received some money from a private foundation for some of the projects, outside of typical government grants, or something.
I don't know, I mean, I, you know, we probably have to, we ask for a town staff member to be on it, but starting with, we could sort of, you know, have a meeting hashed out, so it's worth doing, anyway, you know.
Couple that one.
To them, but I'd be willing to just do it.
Is there probably private firms, but to any non-English subscribe to them, that actually will do that for you?
Well, I sat on another board that, while you bought the meta software, and that provided you all the foundations and stuff across the country, and the requirements, Sims. Subscribe to, for two or three years, it's a lot of work, because there's thousands of organizations that give out money, so that adds thousands of applications. So, it is a lot of work, but we weren't successful, actually, to take the disability, you know, it's Christian works. We weren't, I shouldn't say that, actually, I shouldn't say that, because maybe get some money from the rollback. And they kept me out presenting it to us five, six, seventy years ago, it's.
So, I don't know if it's favorable to you, to Tom, and Leslie, or Ed, to do it or not, but I don't know, I don't wanna step on toes or anything, but I mean, is it favorable for, for us to do that, I guess, right?
I would say that it's important that you have a good setup, first, I would say, turn it into reference. So, the committee, and everybody else knows what the committee is, they're, you know.
Yeah.
And like, just form a committee, you know, and no guidelines, and that's basically, it's, and, you know.
The key thing, I think, too, is not somebody on the committee elected, just go and apply for those grants.
No, 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 I'm saying, maybe in this.
No, no, not at all.
Just identify.
Yeah, I just thought, you know, if there's some things, but. We can identify as a group, you know, and find out how we do those things.
Well, hey, if you're interested, get a couple, and maybe sit down with Tom, or.
Well, just in our, you know, for housing stuff, looking through a lot of that grant stuff, there's money under every rock, but it's so specific and targeted that you've gotta really define the proposal, you know. Greenwood just got money and built a mini, I mean, it's, when I say mini, I mean, it's a micro, it's tiny, but at least they got something, right?
Yeah, so, the thing is, you need, you still need somebody that, you know, it's one thing to get here, to find, okay, there's either this pot of money, this fund, this fund, and this fund. You need somebody that can really do a good job putting that application together, right? You need somebody that can spend the time, dedicate to writing the, you know, that's where we're, we're weak. I mean, Leslie does a good job, along with what she does, Ed does, but the thing is, when you're doing that, there's other stuff, interruptions and stuff, that we don't have. Anybody that can, that basically, that's their job. Okay, I gotta do this application for this fund, and they focus on it, they do it, and do it well, and get it done, get it submitted.
Really is a craft.
Yeah.
So, are, so are we better off maybe hiring somebody to do that, then? Maybe that, that's the way to go, right?
They're up there, I know somebody that applied for grants for the businesses somewhere, got every one of them.
Yeah, so maybe that, that's a possibility, right?
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe the three, you get together sometime, have a, come up.
Have a conversation.
Yeah, have a conversation, because they're up there.
Yeah, because you're right. Applications are scary.
Yeah, you know, the thing is, is that if you, if you get an application, you fill out one, you just, and then they change the rules a little bit, right? And so, you're pulling your hair right again, and like I said, you're doing it off of the side of your desk, and, you know, I'm not taking anything away from any of my staff, because, you know, they're dedicated and try, and try to do the best job that they can do. But they still got other jobs that interrupt them in the middle of trying to get it, get it done, right? And that's me included, because, you know, sometimes it lands on my, most of the time, the draft application ends up on my desk to review and to open creek and stuff like that, and which, that wouldn't change if we had a dedicated person, but, you know, wouldn't be as much preaching, probably, right?
Well, a lot of times, too, you, you, you've probably seen where you get a thing done, you spend a lot of time on it, you send it in, you never hear anything about it, you think, oh, well, we didn't get it, suddenly you get a phone call or an email back. Can you expand on section forty and ten?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and you dig your nuts out again, yeah.
And politics does come into play.
Maybe we just set a meeting with Will and Tom and I.
Yeah, they have conversations.
Have conversations, see where we got from there.
Okay, can we have a motion to quit camera? Second under that. All those in favor say aye, aye. You want that motion, Tom, to do that?
No, I'll, I'll do it.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep, well, what should we do? Come in, that's, that's, that's direction, we.